I have a special but a little sad announcement tonight, and that is that our vice chair, Lenny Wallen-Friedman, is moving out of the district to Connecticut, and therefore this will be his last regular meeting. And so I wanted to take just a few minutes to recognize Lenny for his contributions to the board. Therefore, I'm going to make him actually stand up and come in front of the podium.
Don't you have to stand up too?
Well, I am, but I wanted to let you know that first. So, and Dr. Stanley, if you could come with me as well. Supposedly, this is going to work. Does this work? Oh, okay. Excellent. Yay. So, as I said, this is Vice Chair Wallen-Friedman's last regular board meeting with us. He might be at the next one, but now that he's announced his departure, that's about a 50/50 chance, I think. So, we have a commendation of Lenny Wallen-Friedman that's going to be voted into the record tonight, and it states that "Be it resolved that the school board would like to commend and recognize Lenny Wallen-Friedman for his service on the Edina School Board from January 2012 through May 2022," which, if you can do the math, that's 10 years. The board hereby expresses its sincere appreciation in that of staff and residents of the Edina School District for Lenny Wallen-Friedman's 10 years of devoted service to the Edina Public Schools and its affairs during the period 2012 through 2022. Lenny Wallen-Friedman has served the district in many different capacities, both on the board and off. Vice Chair Wallen-Friedman served as board chair for four years. He also served on each of the different board committees during his tenure: Finance and Facilities, Policy, Teaching and Learning, and Human Resources, which is now our Governance Committee. He has also served as board liaison to many organizations. These have included Student Activities Advisor Committee and Early Childhood Special Education Committee. Additionally, he has been the board liaison to Edina High School. Vice Chair Wallen-Friedman has been a very valuable board member in many different ways. His years of experience provided a breadth and depth of knowledge to all discussions, and his expertise in finance and law always provided valuable context in many discussions. Vice Chair Wallen-Friedman was involved in many critical decisions regarding the district involving the hiring of two superintendents, the development of two strategic plans, moving the ninth grade to the high school, start time changes at the middle and elementary schools, and many other decisions. Vice Chair Wallen-Friedman has been a very dedicated, pragmatic, and strategic-minded board member. The board members would like to congratulate you and extend a collective and individual thank you for your job well done. Thank you so much. You appreciate it.
So, I just want to thank the community for giving me the opportunity to serve on the school board. It was humbling to be elected multiple times, and it was just an honor to actually serve this district. So, I'm known for being brief, and that's it. Thank you very much.
We do have a plaque for him, but it's late arriving, so we'll be sending that to Connecticut. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We're now going to move on to the approval of our agenda, and I just want to note for the public that the crowd strike agreement was removed from the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's meeting, agenda? So moved? Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. We will now vote to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The agenda's approved. Dr. Stanley, will you please review the agenda quickly?
Yes. We are really excited to have members of our Edina Virtual Pathway community here to share about their experiences tonight. Also, we will be hearing from about our AVID program this evening, and then we have a report from Community Education, and some updates around our visual arts curriculum, an update around our vacant board seat that we just talked about, and information about trips that our students will be taking overseas.
Thank you, Dr. Stanley. Our first agenda item, or actually technically second, is our Excellence in Action, and tonight's Excellence in Action features the Elementary Virtual Pathway. Teachers David Higley and Zan Converse are here to tell us about their year. Are you talking also, Principal? We have a guest star. Principal Mahoney is here as well, and will introduce us to some of the students and parents. So, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Chair Allenberg and Dr. Stanley. It's so great to be here. I do think we're supposed to have a student on the ver- online, so I don't know if Alexander is on, but we are really excited to have him come in virtually because, of course, we are the virtual program, and that's the way that best met his needs, so that we thought that was so appropriate. And so, I definitely want to wait a minute before I go into Alexander a little bit, but we are so excited to be here to share some excellence, both from students, our phenomenal teacher team, and parents. We have parents here as well. And being a principal and a teacher in the 3D in-person world, I really, you know, had no idea what to expect when you're doing observations of these classrooms, or you're engaging and seeing what's happening, and I have to tell you, it is magical. Like, it is truly magical. When I go in to do an observation in a virtual classroom, it is like I'm in a real, in an in-person classroom. The kids are engaging, they're talking to each other, they're talking to the teacher, and it is really just an unbelievable learning environment to witness. So, I feel really lucky to have been a part of that this year. So, I'm so thankful for all the support that we've gotten from Edina, and I can't wait to see how much this will grow, because it is really, it's done some amazing things so far. So, I'm hoping that Alexander is on.
Yes, I am.
Oh, great. Yay. Hi, Alexander. So, hello. I am so excited to have Alexander on. So, Alexander came to us at Highlands in Kindergarten, and he came in kindergarten and was in person with us for kindergarten and most of first grade, and has always just really been an engaging academic learner, but also a really fun friend. And I just heard some unbelievable news about a math accomplishment that Alexander had, both statewide and nationally. I think, and I might get this wrong, because I don't have it in my notes, so Mr. Higley or Alexander can let us know if this, if I get this right, but I think he is the top, in the top three third graders nationally for the math test that he recently took. Is that true, Alexander?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Very much.
So, Alexander, what made you really want to focus and do your best work on this math test?
Well, well, first of all, I just wanted to do it because of my passion. First, I'd like to thank all of you for supporting me all over the system. So, I just felt very curious about math, like many of the students. My passion began in the Virtual Pathway. In the Virtual Pathway, where, which had a lot of the online resources that I give access, like I myself and advanced Mr. Higley math classes. In these virtual classes, the math became more beautiful and complex than I had ever imagined, and all the teachers supported me by giving me the time and the resources to expand my knowledge. I'm very grateful to all of you and am happy to be part of this virtual program.
Wow, Alexander, thank you so much. And I have one last question for you. Would you give any advice out there for kids who also might have a passion and want to be curious about math? Do you have any advice for them?
Yes, so, this, this math can be very, is very good for, for kids of all levels who have a, who are very passionate and curious about math. And for those who are not that curious about math, I would like to tell all of you that math is very practical, fun, and beautiful.
Oh, thank you, Alexander. Wonderful job. Congratulations again. We are so proud of you. Keep being curious, okay?
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I'm going to pass it to Mr. Higley and Mr. Converse right now.
Thank you. Thank you for welcoming us, the virtual program. It's kind of fun being in 3D, so this is nice. Alexander, I'm looking at you over here, but thank you very much. I think he, what we're trying to do in our virtual program is give each child the passion for learning and the individualism and personalization, and so, I love that kid. So proud. So, I think, I have some students who would love to talk with you and share about their experience as well. Alexander, honey, since you're, is he still on? Not yet? Okay. Alexander, are you still attached?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Honey, can you get your virtual, your virtual poem?
Okay, so, I'll show my screen.
Yeah. You might be able to share it. I'm not sure if it'll work. Or you can just read it, honey.
I think it can work. So, virtual learning is fun and inspirational, guiding students along the way. It brings along so many resources and opportunities, really getting more exhilarated and eager by the day. The personalized and inclusive teaching empowers students for their success. Unlimited possibilities makes the day never break. Awesome teachers and students build shining communities, leading to a glorious path all day to the Virtual Pathway.
Thank you very much. So, what we're doing is, these are virtual acrostic poems? Yes. So, you're going to listen to, it has V-I-R-T. That's what we're doing. Okay. Carl, I'm going to take your mask and get close to the microphone here, buddy. Okay. Your turn.
Hi. Yeah, sorry. Is this working? Okay. Hi, my name is Carl Davila-Ronnie, and I am in Mr. Higley's 4th grade class in the Edina Virtual Pathway. Here's a poem I wrote about virtual learning. V. Virtual learning means independence, friendship, and imagination. Independent learning and organizing skills are encouraged in virtual school. R. Reading becomes your favorite subject when ReadWorks gives hundreds of choices. T. Timid or brave, online learning gives you a voice. U. Unlimited resources like Google Earth, ReadWorks, and Leavesilk, to name a few, come with online learning. A. Abundant on, one-on-one attention from the best teacher is easier online. L. Learning online keeps me curious, confident, safe, and happy.
Hello, school board. My name is Ryan Stekabora. I am a 3rd grade student in Edina Virtual Pathway. Today, I'm going to be reading a poem that I wrote about my virtual experiences. V. Virtual learning has different subjects besides math and reading. I. It gives you a time to make silly sound effects and hang out with friends. R. Reading is a very fun subject because you can learn about vocabulary words you've not even heard of before. T. Test days are very fun because we do not have 20 slides of pair deck that day. U. Understanding new topics and subjects is very fun. A. Amazing teachers like my teacher, Mr. Higley, can teach you new topics. L. Learning new stuff is quite fun because it is a chance for you to learn even more stuff.
Hi, and I know we're short on time, so I think, I can see we've got 2 minutes and 42 seconds. I'm Zan Converse. I teach the 5th and 6th graders. Thank you for having us so, so much. Appreciate your guys' support and hope that we can continue to grow the program. I had three students who, again, taking advantage of the virtual resources that they've got. They wrote a kind of an opinion piece, and they turned it into sort of a piece for why virtual learning is the best. I don't know if I can, I don't think I can play it.
Someone going to play?
Maybe it's just going to be read into the record. I don't know, but it's right there, and if somebody is able to hit play, it would, it would play, but.
Please come play.
Here we come.
Hi, my name is Clara.
My name is Si.
And my name is Eileen. We're from Mr. Converse's 5th grade EEVP class, and we won the ultimate mind control challenge. Don't worry, um, we didn't like you telekinesis or anything. Uh, it's not what it sounds like.
Our mission was to convince Mr. Converse that talented is the best word to describe our class. This was our submission.
Hello, our class is many things, but can anyone think of one word to describe it? Well, we did. We've come up with a word that we think the class embodies: talented. Here is why we think that the word truly defines us.
For example, a good number of brick class are very good at drawing and are artistically adept. Multiple people have shared drawings, paintings, and sketches with the class, and all of the pieces are natural. They are also musically talented in the arts as well. A number of students play the piano, the guitar, as well as the marbling, flute, trombone, and a number of other things.
Next, we have a lot of people talented in the STEM. Many people are very talented at math, chemistry, robotics, coding, flash scripting, and a lot of other sciences. We have seen a lot of things shared, such as games that the students have coded, handmade miniature walking robots, systems that they set up, and science slash math projects that they've done.
Then, there is a good deal of people who are great at language arts. Many have shared their stories and poetry, all varied in different ways. Some are amusing and entertaining, others are emotional and evocative, others are realistic and relatable. We've heard these shared in writing classes or in meetings at the end of the day when students read out their work.
Others are good at baking, cooking, and creating things in general. They have shared delectable recipes and foods with us, and all of it looks very interesting and delightful. In the end of the day, mates, our colleagues, share their, their recipes or even collaborate it through art. One of our classmates shared a mini replica of a sushi on paper, which we all thought was ingenious.
Our classmates have succeeded in many different sections of the arts. They've also impressed us with their drawings, music, and stories. We believe that talented is a very positive and accurate description of our classmates.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you, everyone, for presenting, especially for the outstanding poems. Those were great, and thank you for being such great educators for EVP students. It's an outstanding program, so thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to hearings from members of the public. Pursuant to Board Policy 206, we ask that you do not duplicate information that has been previously presented. If you have a complaint about individual employees, board members, or students in the district, please direct any of these comments to the appropriate site administrator, the superintendent, or submit them in writing to the board. The board typically does not respond or have discussion on any issues presented, but questions raised during presentation, presentations will receive follow-up as directed by the board. And I would just like to remind speakers that presentations are limited to three minutes, so please try to finish up at three minutes. Thank you. And we have three speakers tonight. The first is John Wellborn. So, Mr. Wellborn?
Good evening, fellow board members. Thank you for all of your service and for what you do for us, okay? We get that it's important. I am not here as an activist. I'm not here as a political partisan. I'm not here to teacher bash, student bash, union bash. I'm here because my child matters. Excellence is something that this district strives for, and I don't believe we're getting there. I believe we're settling from mediocre. Excellence is integrity, it's ethics, it's discipline, supervision, rigor, high employment standards, enforcement, consequences, and accountability. Excellence is admitting our failures and doing something about it, learning from our mistakes. Mediocrity is making excuses instead of solutions, blaming others, constantly playing the victim, implementing inconsistent discipline, allowing an environment where scholastic dishonesty is perpetuated, and letting social media and political discord determine how we run the district. Mediocrity is seventh place. Your job as the district's leadership is to take a look at what's changed, look at the past, look inward, and take decisive action now. We are behind. We know it. What are we going to do about it? We've moved past COVID, and we need to quit using it as an excuse. The lack of supervision and discipline at the high school is creating an environment where fighting, dishonesty, intolerance of disparate views, and a lack of basic respect and civility are rampant. We do not need lectures on morality. We need common sense leadership that demonstrates courage and conviction and commands order and respect. What are we going to do about it? Cheating scandals using cell phones are not new. Look at your school newspaper in 2013, 2018, 2021, and last week. We clearly are not learning from our mistakes. Instead of improving supervision over test-taking, increasing the penalties for cheating, and perhaps taking cell phones away during a test, we've chosen to invalidate all students' grades and force them to retake tests. Where is the equitable treatment in that model? What message does that send to those who showed integrity? Ethical kids deserve an education, too. The feckless response simply perpetuates the issue and holds no one accountable. It's not my job to catch cheaters. It is yours. Our nine years of indifference on this subject is embarrassing. Math has dominated the conversation this week. We've all seen it. A careful review of this issue helps you recognize it's not new. It's been around for years, okay? Students go in for help in the mornings, and they're standing in lines, and there's too many to get help. When the average grade in the class is half, it's failing. We need to look inward and solve for it. It's not fair to the teachers. It's not fair to the students. Are we giving them an environment where they can teach and where students can learn? I'm wrapping up in 10 seconds. We've had a difficult and taxing year. It's time to start fighting, stop, stop fighting loud with louder, and stop letting the noise dictate our direction. I've lost faith in a lot of the leaders. Those of you who bothered to take my call know the details. I won't share them here tonight. We stopped challenging. We accept impotent non-answers. We follow the mob. We change nothing, and then we act shocked when history replace, repeats itself. We need to own this, and we need to fix it, and we're counting on it. And those students who were just up here are counting on us to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wellborn. Next up is Johanna Roni De Avila, and I apologize if my pronunciation.
My name is Johanna Roni De Avila, and I have lived in Edina for 13 years. I have a 10th grader at Edina High School, and a 3rd grader, Carl, who just read one of the poems tonight, and he's in Mr. Higley's Virtual Pathway 3rd grade classroom, and I'm here to speak on that tonight in support of that programming. Carl has had an amazing experience learning virtually in Edina. He has gone from being a curious, smart, but kind of inconsistent, random learner, to being an organized, independent, confident student who feels empowered to direct his own learning. He really thrives on the combination of a routine of regular Google meetings and daily and weekly assignments in Schoology, while also having the flexibility to complete his work on his own schedule throughout the day. He also gets regular small group attention for enrichment in math and extra help with reading. We are a bilingual English and Spanish-speaking family. In 4K through 2, we enrolled Carl in the Richfield Public Schools because of their Spanish dual-language program, so that he would be literate and fluent in both speaking and writing in Spanish. We planned to shift Carl back to Edina in 5th grade and then finish middle school and high school here. When COVID hit, everything changed. During the second year of the pandemic, Richfield didn't offer an all-online option, and Edina did, so we decided to shift him back in 3rd grade. It was an excellent choice. It was the best decision we've made in a long time. We thought that once Carl was vaccinated in December of 2021, that we'd shift him back to in-person, but because he was having such an amazing experience with Mr. Higley and virtual learning in general, it was too good to give it up. We just finished the year in virtual, and we realized that pretty early on in the fall. I think that people worry that virtual learning can't produce the same kind of relationships and educational results that in-person teaching can. I realize it may not work for everyone, but for my son, virtual learning has been transformative. I have witnessed Carl reaping the benefits of great teachers, kind and fun classmates, and challenging schoolwork all online while safe at home. He has blossomed into a child who only excelled at and only really liked math, to a student who now says his favorite thing to do in school is read and learn new facts in the is read and learn new facts in the article of the day in Readworks. I'm so happy and excited to know that Edina is offering an online option permanently, because I know it is an excellent option for so many families and students in a variety of different circumstances. Carl will be going back in person next year, full disclosure, at Creek Valley, because both my husband and I work outside the home, and we want to give my amazing aunt the chance to enjoy her retirement. But if circumstances were different, we would definitely continue online, and we would recommend it to anyone who asked. Thank you for giving me the time to share.
Thank you so much. Now we have Dr. Anquita Dekka.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Stanley. It's nice to see you all, particularly in this new space, I haven't been here in a while, which is a good thing, I suppose. So I'm here to share a little bit more about my experiences as a parent about EEVP. So the pivot to online learning, oh, I have to also admit that my son, Rianche, read a little poem, he's a 3rd grader in Mr. Higley's class. I also do have a 9th grader at Edina High School. So the pivot to online learning forced on all of us by a global pandemic was challenging for children, for teachers, and for families. In my limited experience in those two years, I found that the initial stages lacked structure and was filled with busy work. Therefore, I was admittedly nervous about enrolling my 3rd grader in the virtual pathways program last year. He had not received a vaccine when the school year started in September 2021, and he has some history of upper respiratory illnesses. Therefore, I took a leap of faith and enrolled him in EEVP. That acronym is very important in our house to say it right. So our experience at EEVP has surpassed our expectations, and perhaps because we were so fortunate to have Mr. David Higley as the 3rd grade teacher. And as a disclaimer, Mr. Higley hasn't paid me to come here. I came here on my own volition. Mr. Higley has an uncanny ability to create structure and facilitate learning in the virtual space. He demonstrates genuine empathy and care for his students, and has successfully created a virtual classroom where the students feel connected to each other and therefore to their learning. Mr. Higley has very skillfully created a community around the Google Meet squares. Every day, he holds reading and math classes that are tiered by student, by where the students are that week, as he says, sometimes that month. He organizes them into small groups and is able to give individualized attention to all of his students. The daily diagnostics, the extra challenge work, the creativity, and the fun activities, they've all kept my son learning and growing, but without the feeling of overwhelm. Mr. Higley is always available for help and consultation, even when students work independently. And I have noticed my son dropping in for what we at the university would call office hours, except he does it via Google Meet. Mr. Higley has empowered the kids to use their agency to problem-solve and seek help and support as needed. From virtual museum and park tours to lunch bunch, buddy time, and park playdates, the 3rd grade classroom on EEVP has been pure magic for my son. Mr. Higley is an exceptional teacher who has leveraged today's cutting-edge technology to teach effectively. The communication to parents from both Mr. Higley and Mr. Sean Severson has been stellar. The last two and a half years have been sobering for all of us. We have all faced some amount of personal and professional losses. I have, as a university faculty and administrator, so much of my time has been spent on caring for students that I have only had limited time or sideways glance sometimes for my own children's learning. So I'm beyond grateful to Mr. Higley and EEVP for helping my 3rd grader thrive. Online learning is not for everyone. Granted, it requires skilled teachers like Mr. Higley, some amount of parental engagement, and most importantly, highly self-directed children. EEVP has the potential to continue to remain a viable opportunity for some children and families in our community, provided it continues to receive the right support and resources. I would like to conclude by saying that every child in our district deserves a child like Mr. Higley, online or not. A teacher who is deeply caring and interested in student learning. Thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you. Thank you to all our speakers for coming tonight. We're going to move on to our report for tonight, and we have our Director of Community Education, Valerie Burke, and Coordinator of Early Learning, of the Early Learning Center, Leah Byrd, here to talk about our Community Education and Early Learning Center. Oh, I moved way ahead in the agenda, I apologize. You can come on up while we approve the consent agenda, because it'll take one second, I apologize. Yeah, do I have a motion, oh, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We will now vote to approve the consent agenda. Karen, are you on there?
I am.
Can we see Karen's screen of her, Karen Gabler? Yeah, we have to do roll call, and we have to also see Karen while she's voting.
My apologies, guys.
So, Ann, all of our votes are going to have to be a roll call vote from now on. If you're watching at home, we're just waiting to get Board Member Gabler on the screen for us so we can take votes.
Sorry, this is holding up the show.
That's okay.
Can you see us, Karen?
I can now, yeah, for a while, I couldn't.
So Karen, I'm going to bypass you in the consent agenda, unless you come up really fast.
No, that's okay, and yeah, if I need to sit out, then this, or whatever the appropriate procedure, I don't want to hold up the entire meeting here.
Let's move forward with the consent agenda, and if you could just bypass Karen's vote so we can get through the consent agenda, and then we can move forward with our report, and hopefully she'll be up by the time we take any other votes. Allenberg. Oh, then we don't need roll call, that's right. Okay. Okay, so all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Now we can move on to our report. Welcome, we're going to talk about our Community Education and Early Learning Center. And we have Valerie Burke and Leah Byrd here. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Stanley, Chair Allenberg, community and colleagues. Leah and I are here tonight to review our plan for meeting the Early Learning Center benchmarks of the Edina School Strategic Plan and Data Metrics Plan. Over the last few months, Leah and I have shared with the board information showcasing a variety of data regarding our classes and our enrollment over the last 10 years. This helps us understand where we have been, and we have also shared with you what our current registration is. Right now, our early childhood family education class numbers are 39% higher than they were in 2020, 2021. Our preschool numbers are 58% higher than they were last year. And overall, enrollment numbers for the ELC have increased 49% from 176 enrollees to 362 enrollees this year. While we are encouraged by this showing, we recognize that we have a lot of work to do to reengage our young families in the power of early childhood family education and in the power of all the high-quality classes at the Early Learning Center. This spring, we engaged our entire community education team, and we have spent significant time gathering information and in data to inform our planning for this report. We recognize that the Early Learning Center, and specifically, early childhood family education, is an entry point for the high-quality and family-focused programming and curriculum that is the standard of the Edina Public Schools. So we're excited to share with you our planning for the future, as it aligns with the strategic plan. There are two strategies in strategic plan where the Edina Learning Center and its classes and programs are specifically called out and aligned to our overall plan. Those are Strategies A and E. One advances academic excellence, growth, and readiness, and one highlights, pardon me, highlights the engagement of parents, schools, and community. It's an interesting pairing of the strengths that community education as a deliverer of market-based programs brings, and the growth and readiness skills that the ELC has obtained in partnership with Teaching and Learning Department bring. Let's begin with Strategy E, engaging parents, schools, and community. Over the next four years, the strategic plan asks us to reinvigorate our marketing, communications, and engagement strategies to reintroduce our programs and classes to existing, new, and evolving audiences. Our outcomes for this plan are increase our awareness of the Edina Learning Center to all families with young children ages birth through age 5, and to reestablish the Edina Learning Center's ECFE program as a place to learn and grow as a parent, to bond with your child, to build your parent support network, and to grow as an advocate for your child. Our report outlines the many ways early childhood family education supports students, parents, and the community. Parents report that those that have been a part of ECFE have improved parenting and a better understanding of their role in their child's success. The research link also shows that child's school and academic success is increased by parents who participate in ECFE. And data suggests that former ECFE parents arrive at school more likely to be involved in their child's learning, and they feel more connected to their community and other parents. Creating awareness of our ECFE to our young families by multiplying the ways we use our marketing tools and multiplying our outreach strategies to serve our community of early learners is key to our plan's success. We're outlining a high-level overview of identified actions, and then we outline a timeline of some specific actions that will be taken during the next 12 months to begin. Our plan has built-in evaluation strategies to determine what, if any, adaptations to the plan should be made in Year 2. Beginning this year, we have begun the process of implementing strategies to create awareness about who we are, what differentiates us, and how the Edina Learning Center provides the best supports to prepare both parents and children for life together, birth through age 5, and most importantly, for life together after preschool with the Edina Public Schools. To do that, in this post-COVID, very competitive marketplace, we need to focus our energies and our resources to reach these goals. We will increase our reach to households living in Edina with children ages birth through age 5 by obtaining a resident email and address list. We will increase ECFE enrollment this fall. Beginning now, we are using high-tech and high-touch marketing and outreach strategies that are targeted and varied. We are increasing devoted staff time to help us accomplish this, and we will be evaluating and using data as we go so we can continue to grow our enrollment into '22, '23, and beyond. We are creating a district and community ed communications and marketing team, sharing our stories, our registration dates, our key community-building events, and other Edina Learning Center important happenings with a joint communications team of district and community education. Our goal is to have this information highlighted on our website, both in community ed and on the district, so that we, our families, can find us easily through the Enrollment Center, through the Early Childhood Family Education website directly or through the district, and making learning about us easy as well. We are increasing program options and opportunities for families to participate in parent education classes and events. We'll have in-person, hybrid, and online-only options available for parents and families, as well as on-campus and off-campus opportunities for parents. And finally, we need our Early Childhood Advisory Council back. We need eyes and ears out in the community regularly. This spring, I applaud Leah and her team has gone into every early childhood family education classroom, reached out community-wide to reinvigorate our Early Childhood Advisory Council. We're currently at 12 members strong, and after meeting with them and hearing their commitment to both ECFE and the ELC, I feel confident their outreach and community-building efforts are key to the success in creating awareness and supporting families. It's been a long couple of years, but we have an amazing story to tell, and a story we want to tell. The ELC is vital entry point for families in Edina, and it's a place where great teachers, parent education educators, and staff live. I'm going to turn it over to Leah to talk about Strategy 2.
You all can hear me, right? I'm pretty loud. Well, good evening, Superintendent Stanley, Chair Board, Allenberg, and the rest of you, and to the people in the room, and those watching at home. I'm always excited to have an opportunity to come and talk about early childhood, a deep passion for mine, for me. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our third goal. Our third goal is aligned with Strategy A, which is advanced academic excellence and growth and readiness. Our charge is to provide robust early childhood education for all learners so that the Early Learning Center students are prepared for kindergarten. This work begins at birth. The partnership within our ECFE program helps parents understand their child's developmental milestones while also developing a support network for other caregivers. Our outcome is all learners ages birth through 5 will receive a robust education through strong social-emotional development and emergent academic skills to ensure alignment with kindergarten readiness skills. In the ELC, we are building a ladder of academic and social-emotional support to help all kids thrive from birth to age 5. Get ready for kindergarten. And this includes parent education and parent-community-building events that get the parents ready, too. This summer, all staff will complete 30 hours of training for the creative curriculum. We will also, we will finish creating each teacher's classroom literacy toolkit, which is the tools that all teachers use in their teaching. We, and we will have our theme bins, which are created for each of the units, and the creative curriculum also completed. Our literacy leadership team facilitated by our literacy coach will provide coaching bi-monthly to teachers as they work to implement the curriculum within the classroom. This team is also responsible for creating and implementing a professional development plan for new staff that start with us next fall. All of our staff will receive six additional hours of training at the end of September. Teachers will be surveyed in the fall to establish baseline data regarding their comfort and needs with implementation. We will survey teachers again during the winter and the spring to gauge their needs and use data to plan future training and coaching needs. And finally, our literacy leadership team will develop our literacy sustainability plan for 2023 and beyond. It's important to note that all of our teaching staff will go through the creative curriculum training. This includes our parent educators. We know that parents are students' first teachers. Our parent educators do a wonderful job of providing the support parents and caregivers need to establish healthy families that set kids up to be successful learners. The Creative Curriculum does have a parent communication app, and it's very similar to Seesaw, but it's a little bit more focused attention on a parent education piece and the skills that parents will need to support kids' learning. Furthermore, the Creative Curriculum will Furthermore, the Creative Curriculum will be implemented in every learning space at the Early Learning Center, which includes our parent education classrooms as well as our ECFE classes zero through five. Our ECFE preschool class offers a great opportunity for parents to experience the curriculum in real time with their child. And we know, as Val said, that kids thrive when parents understand them and are supporting their learning needs. For the 2022-23 school year, we will be providing more events that are specifically designed to support the parent's role in creating lifelong learners. Our preschool teachers often have a Bring Your Parent to School Day, and some of you may remember Teacher Joanna's ABC Potluck, very big hit every year. And this, this is an opportunity for parents to experience the learning that kiddos are doing at school, take that experience home, and talk about it a little bit more at home to sort of enrich that learning project. And furthermore, our literacy coach, our outreach manager, and our parent educators will plan literacy and math-specific events for parents to learn about emergent literacy at the preschool level and what they can do at home to help their kids learn. All of our events will have a parent educator available to connect with parents and answer any questions that they may have. And this is a common practice, that we typically have a parent educator always available for parents. Next year will mark our fifth year of the pyramid implementation framework. We are proud of the work that we have done since 2018. We have established strong, school-wide protocols, data capture systems, and partnerships with parents to support students' social and emotional development as they prepare for the next milestone in their young lives. Part of our work next year will be to create a sustainability plan for our pyramid model. Professional development will focus on onboarding new staff, creating larger connections with parents, and using our new curriculum to intersect with the pyramid framework. Changes made this past year and our newly-designed preschool screening space have been a huge success. We are proud to share that we provide preschool screening for all incoming kindergarteners. Our next goal will be to increase the number of three-year-olds that we're able to screen each year. An early childhood screening is designed to determine if a child is meeting their developmental milestones, and if they are not, we are able to get them intervention sooner and sometimes longer when we start when they're three versus when they're four years old. Screening is also a great opportunity to share information about the totality of the offerings at the ELC. We welcome families to join us anytime. Our goal with this work is to share it with our community. We need to brag and educate a bit about what a high-quality center that we are. Finally, and of the utmost importance, we intend to survey our community online annually and in small focus groups with the assistance of our advisory council, our liaisons, and our community experts regularly to make sure that we are meeting the needs and to continue to learn how best to evolve our offerings. Special care will be given to our underserved populations so that we are truly ensuring that all of our Edina children are being served here at the Early Learning Center. Thank you. Any questions?
Board members, questions, comments?
I would just like to say thank you. We've been talking about this now for many months, and thank you for a very detailed outline of what you're looking at doing, the strategies and the outcomes that you're going for. That's exactly what I was hoping to hear. So, thank you very much for your efforts on that.
Thank you. Julie?
Yeah, hi. Thanks, you guys. That was great. I have a couple of questions. I noticed in the report, there was no changes or plans made to programming and bringing in more ECFE teachers. Can you guys talk about that? Is that part of this plan? Because I guess I'm trying to understand, I believe in some conversations we've had before, that the EC, ECFE element is siloed from the classrooms, right? Like, they've been separated? Is that the, are you recommending that the strategy is, is back connected? And what kind of teacher support are you?
So, the ultimate goal is to hire more staff. And we would do that through the outreach and the marketing, which would bring more families into ECFE, and more registrations would then, you know, domino into hiring more staff and be.
How's your doggy doing?
Oh, not good.
My gut twitters.
Not good. How's your dog?
Same.
Yeah.
After having an infection, she's, she's, you know, she's fine, but she's really slow.
What is that?
The stream's back.
Our livestream is back.
Can they make sure it's Karen? Oh, okay.
Apologies for the technological issues.
Ouch.
Karen, you might want to mute your side of the conversation. I'm just looking at you for no reason. Sorry.
I was like, I'm not Karen.
No, sorry. I was just looking that way. All right.
It's your muscle memory, Eric.
It is. Okay. Would you like to proceed mid-thought, exactly where you were? Can you text her to mute? I think that's the only person that is.
Oh, she just muted.
Great.
Did I answer your question a little bit?
Yeah, I think so. I guess my.
Turn this on. I guess my bigger question is, I understand that you, the plan would then be to hire staff to fill classes once where we have interest, more interest? Is that correct? Or more enrollment? But my, and I, I'm under, I understand that. I know, understand there's a lot to go with, you don't want to have classes that you can't fill and all of that. I guess my bigger question is, where do you see ECFE fitting within the programming at the, at the Early Learning Center? That I'm not totally understanding because I, I've had the impression from the last, the classes that have been offered, that they're more standalone, like they're, they're an added layer, not more like a traditional EC, ECFE class where.
I'm sorry, I've got a puzzled look because I'm trying to track what you mean by a standalone because they're, they're, ECFE classes are weaved into every, you know, from birth through our toddlers, through our twos, through our threes, fours, and fives, and then we have a variety of parent ed, you know, that are, that are more standalone if people want a particular topic. Am I?
Well, I guess.
Ask me a different way.
Okay, let me, yes, and I understand that. I understand zero through five. That's fantastic. That's great. My question is, okay, if I were to sign up for a threes, I had a three-year-old, and I was signing up for an ECFE class.
Yeah.
What does that look like? For my, for, as a parent and the student, where's the interaction? Is it in the classroom? Is it on top? Is it all three-year-olds, there's an extra class? Because I know from the last catalog, I know I had questions about that. That's why I'm, I just want to know where your, where your recommendation is coming from.
So, if you were to sign up for a three-year-old class, that would be a really good fit to be in what's called our three, sorry, I have to speak in the section number, that's the world I live in, three-five-dash-one, which is three-to-five-year-olds, section one. And it would look very, very much like all of our ECFE preschool classes where parents come to school with the child. The first hour is that child-parent interaction time, and then the second hour is the parents separate and they go and have parent education in a separate room with a licensed parent educator.
Okay. And so, that is the main. That's how most of the classes will be? The majority of classes will be that way or not?
If it's an ECFE class, there's, yes, then they always have a parent education piece where there's that child, parent-child time, and some of the ECFE classes are separating, meaning that model, you go into another room. But some of them are not separating, meaning the parents stay in the classroom with the child for the entirety, entirety of the class. And the, either the classroom teacher is dual-licensed, so they deliver the parent ed as well, or sometimes the parent, like, the parent educator and the classroom teacher are just co-teaching the full two hours or two and a half hours of the class.
Okay. Thank you. I just, I didn't have total clarification from the report, and I guess, so then there's, because there was no call-out for resources needed for the teachers in the report, so is that something different? Because I did notice other things were called out that you needed funding for? So, how does that work?
That's why I was explaining that we're using our excess ECFE levy dollars from that, because we, we receive the same amount of levy dollars.
Right.
And so, we have, I mean, it's, it's a good news. We have some additional dollars from last year that we're, we're supporting additional staff.
Okay.
To help jumpstart. Also, getting out, you know, some of the activities that we outlined in the, and the more specific things about pop-ups and, you know, lunch and learns and different ways that we can engage families that might not be the traditional way, and then we'll also have the traditional way. Because one of the things that we recognize is we have, we need to get better acquainted with the, our, not only post-COVID, but our families that are moving in and out of Edina, knowing that, you know, we talked about before, we have a lot more infant-child care out there. We just need to understand where some of the new ways that we could reach them with parent ed can be, that the stuff, that traditional classes in our school during the school day are a constant. But we want to make sure that every family has the opportunity to engage, and so finding out more about where they need it, how they need it, what are the best ways to get parent education to them, because that's our larger goal, is to make sure that all kinds of families that may not have that time in the day can benefit from what ECFE has to offer.
Okay. And so, it's hard to be so detailed. I don't want to monopolize all the questions here. So, then the goal based, because I did see one of the outcomes was, the success outcomes was that we would have increased programming in classes. I did see that as an outcome. But, so, what's the plan for, I guess, this upcoming year? Are you planning on hiring and bringing in more programming for this upcoming year? Or is it more planning this year and then rolling out additional more? I guess I'm just trying to get an idea on the timing.
Yeah, no, what we hope to do is fill the classes more robustly that we have in our catalog, because we had a, quite a large variety of classes in our catalog. And we have, you know, decent enrollment, but we know from past data that we get two times of enrollment early, like the February people that are super organized and get online. And then it's a big, it's a long pause for ECFE, and traditionally, and we don't know if we're working in traditional, so I'm going to say that word. We have another increase in signups, usually in July and August, which is one of the reasons we are right on right now, making sure we're getting out with lots of ways to talk about and what we have open right now for this year. And then we'll kind of adapt as we go. But we, we have room in our ECFE classes this fall.
Okay.
May I piggyback a little bit, Dr. Green? You know, we also want to use this summer to do some, like, ECFE pop-ups around the community. So, like, an example is a stroller walk and talk, right? Meet us at the park, we'll have a parent educator who will meet you there. It's one hour free, because we can afford to do it free this year because of our ECFE levy dollars. And it's just an opportunity, not only to get a dose of parent education, but to also hopefully meet some new friends in the community. And another idea that we're talking about for pop-up is what's called a breath of fresh air. Sort of think of like ECFE in the park, right? Like a picnic, but you get parent education while you're eating your Lunchable or whatever it is you might be eating. But we're really going to transition into thinking about what sort of pop-ups can we do in the summer that would get the word out about ECFE, introduce ourselves to our community, and then also hopefully encourage them to come and try us out in the fall and help build up that registration in the fall as well. And Val's correct, we typically have ECFE families that do that first, and then they, they sort of just hang back. And then usually around late August, early September, we start to see ECFEs build, you know, back up, and, and a lot of ECFE is word of mouth, right? And, and that's a great way to recruit families as well.
Okay. Thank you. Director Shaw?
Thank you. I'm going to echo what Michael said. Thank you for all this information, and we've been talking about it for a while, so it's really exciting to see it. And I'm so excited to see ECFE getting big and bold again in our district. The only question I had is if I'm looking at the timeline, the piece that I am wondering where it fits in the timeline is any sort of enrollment goals that you would have? So, I know you've, you've had conversations with other West Metro ECFE programs, and, and I'm wondering where kind of like a best practices conversation would occur to say, we know that we need to fill the, you know, whether, the seven-to-eleven-month-old category to really make the strongest impact on our district and getting kids into our kindergartens and all that. And where would that kind of information, when would you be gathering that kind of information and setting some goals, right? So, like, we hope enrollment in this next year is X, and then the following year is X, that kind of thing?
We sort of intentionally, because we went round and round with this, honestly, Board Member Shaw. We're still, and, and I really, we really didn't want to use this word in this report, but we really are still living in a world of uncertainty with COVID. And so, honestly, our, our metro directors or, you know, other coordinators are living in that same world. And so, we thought we could put strong numbers, but we really want, and that's why we could sort of made a shorter plan and tried to build in constant evaluation, and we'd be happy to come back knowing how numbers progressed with the events we did, which is why we have an element of really some data management skill-building for our staff, because we really need accurate data that we can rely on regularly from, from constant sources. That way, we can really be able to share, here's where we are, which is why I wanted to pull some of that for you tonight. I'm not trying to sidestep that, but we hesitated in trying to, what we felt like a little bit, make up numbers. What we could probably share is if all of our classes filled this fall, and I don't have that, but I could get that, here's what we would want to see increase. I didn't actually think about that, but that, that, that would be a way to sort of answer that question. What would we need to do to fill those classes? How many people to enroll? And that could be an absolute goal.
Okay.
So, if you, if you, if that would be helpful, I'm happy to.
That makes sense, yeah. I just, I feel like as we continue on.
Yes.
And as a metric, as we're watching this grow, it would be helpful to kind of see something that we can kind of benchmark and watch.
It's going to be our pleasure to be able to be able to have foundational data to build off of.
Because I think without that and the absence of that, the only thing we have to look back on is like, what were we doing 10 years ago, right? So, all of that, that information.
And I will show Director Shaw that I meet with the other metro coordinators every other Monday, and we have this conversation every other Monday about ECFE specifically, and what are you doing to get families back into ECFE? What are you hearing from families about bringing their babies into the building? What is your threshold that, of the number of registrations that you use to say, okay, we've got 10 kids that have registered for this toddler class, so we're going to open another section, right? Because there's also that best practice, you know? Anything more than 10, 13-month-olds in a room, it can be a little stressful and anxiety-inducing. So, when do we add another section? And so, bill, building-wide, program-wide, that is an ongoing metric that I'm always looking at of, okay, we've got a class and the ratio is one to four. So, what does an eight-baby class look like? What does a 16-baby look class like? When do we transition to instead of it being, you know, 16 babies and eight on the waitlist, we do two baby classes? How do we do that? So, that conversation is ongoing, and sort of a piece that we're always thinking about is how can we build off of the momentum and add more programming?
Thank you.
May, may I just offer one quick comment? Language does matter, and I can appreciate from a sales standpoint of goals versus something else. But I encourage you to consider, have a target. A target is not necessarily a hard, fast, you have to meet or whatever, but it's a, it's a, it's a measuring point that you're targeting for, whether it's for the baby-and-me level to the, you know, seven-to-18-month level, to whatever it might be. And then I think for the board's purposes, is start with a target, and then as we evolve, as you learn more, as you get those data management practices in place, then it starts to become a goal, that the goal then starts to become an actual metric that says, this is what we're going to hit, to then make that happen. I think I could be tolerant of a target now, as you're trying to build this out, to then eventually evolve it to a goal, and then the goal is something that then we want to then hold administration, okay, hey, this is our real measuring stick to making that happen. But I think that what I'm hearing from you, Val, is you're not quite confident there yet because of where the circumstances are, and I think I can be tolerant of that, but I think we want to evolve it from a target to a goal sometime in the next 12 to 18 months so that we can then. so that we can then get real tangible levels of where it is. Knowing that whatever you try, some things are going to work, some things aren't going to work, that's okay, as long as we're moving, as long as we're trying to make things happen and we're learning from that experience, for us to then move on from that standpoint.
Yep.
I think what's hard for us is to figure out what would be our goal for ECFE and the program to say, from where we were, and you showed the, the metrics, we would say, we would love to be back to here.
Right.
We might be willing to say that, but that doesn't mean we're grounded in any reality about that. But I think I'd like to find a mixture in the next 18 months where both parties could say, that goal really makes a whole lot of sense. We're totally on board and we're going to hold you to that. And here's the resource that we're going to prioritize to make that happen, and what you then need to do that. That's just the way I kind of heard what I just, so just something to think about.
Yeah, well, thank you for that feedback.
I just had one quick question to comment, along the same lines as Michael. Talked about the summer pop-up programs. I don't know if there's a metric to, to talk about how those convert to enrollments and those types of things, and whether or not those are there in the pieces of the data charts and whatnot we're, we're going to be looking at. But then also, if you, I assume you don't have the targets really for the summer pop-up things because they're relatively new, but like our enrollment, is enrollment done and registration done through the same normal process that is currently going on? Or is it, or since it's free, there's no registration needed? Or how does that process work for people?
So there's two different ways we can do it. We can obviously have the class, do the advertising, create a class in LEO, which is our enrollment purchase, our thing, and have families register. But we also have a number of families that are not comfortable going online and registering. They're more comfortable showing it up. And we saw that at our spring event that we did in the playground. In either instances, we do ask for contact information, so that we are at least gathering the amount of people that did come to the event, and then we're using that contact information for further education, further outreach, further marketing that we might be able to do. We're using QR codes and other ways of tagging the different events we're doing, so that when someone, let's say someone went to a pop-up, they can tell us that with three quick questions from our registration people. Where did you hear about it? How, how did you learn about it? So tracking that too will give us information, like as you said, is this working? Is this not working? Was this a good, good use of our staff time? Was this not? And honestly, I mean, I don't know that we're one and dones. I think we need a little time with this. But we just, yeah, yeah. So, so that's how we're going, we're going to be more intentional about tagging things so we can track where we're successful in getting information out to families, and then leap to registration, you know? It's kind of like the ladder of, of getting there.
Thank you.
Karen, did you have a question?
I do, thank you. I wanted to say, and I'm sorry, you probably are just, I'm just this voice coming from the speaker's room.
It's God.
I wanted to say, kind of what some of my peers have said, Val and Leah, there are a lot of really fantastic ideas and specifics and details in this report, so thank you. Specifically, when I look at page 225 of our board book, honestly, what I see here makes me think that maybe I should have another child. It's so exciting. So.
Yeah, I should.
So, I, some specifics here that I really wanted to highlight. I like the idea that we're, to hear that we're sharing and receiving specific ideas from other, other districts. Anytime that we can swap ideas and make is a great thing, especially in our community ed and our early childhood. So thank you for taking the time to do that. I'm really pleased to see a big focus on ECFE in this information. I think we've acknowledged throughout the last, you know, four or five years, we've kind of not been as intentional with that programming, and we're seeing that kind of come home a little bit. So I really appreciate the focus that has been spent on that area. When, when Director Green asked about kind of how the programming looks, and I heard you mention the three-to-five-year-old ECFE program, I think one of the things I would like to see as we think about programming, or at least to put the seat out there, when you have a wide, I know that's been something we've offered in the past, is that why of a swath of age groups? And I think that that's a deterrent, can be a deterrent for families. A three-year-old developmentally is a lot different than a five-year-old. So maybe kind of keeping that in, in mind too, if that hasn't worked in the past, that maybe smaller age spans for that ECFE programming. And I think this is an exciting time for ECFE, because with COVID, people's work schedules have changed. So they may have some flexibility to have a three-day program in where they come for ECFE for one day. So I'm really excited to see, and as other board members have said, seeing some of those measure, measurable goals and getting some more specifics on that, that we can kind of get reports on and check in periodically, I think will be really helpful down the road. And we heard in an enrollment report not that long ago that they are projecting that our younger kids, there might be more of a pipeline coming to us. So I think this is a great opportunity for us to be making some of these changes. So thank you for the work that went into this, and I'm excited to see some of the specifics of how we can measure this success.
Thank you, Karen.
Thanks, Director Gable. I will share with you, I don't know if she can hear me, it feels weird just talking to the universe, but there, there actually is offered next year, four-year-old-only ECFE class. It's a kindergarten readiness four-year-old class. And the ultimate goal is to get back to a three-year-old-only kindergarten, or three-year-old-only ECFE preschool class as well. We have a really healthy group of babies and toddlers and a cohort of parents that have already articulated that they would like to stay together. And so, that is a partnership for me to work with them, to be able, I can create the class that, that that group of people are interested in and have them, just like many of you did, transition up through the years. So, I'm looking forward to being able to, to share that information and metrics as well.
Great. Thank you both so much for coming.
You're welcome.
And for your great work on this, I appreciate it.
Quick comment.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, so, you mentioned that you were going to, you were doing the three-year-old screening as well as pre-case screening. And so, I mean, I'm just hoping that the district is able to take a look at targeting families that have students that traditionally do not succeed in school, and bringing them in as three-year-olds and four-year-olds into classrooms.
Yes.
I think that that would be very helpful for those families as well as for the district.
Our goal is similar to, you know, is, is identical actually to the K-12 goal. We, we know that if we get a family and we can have them stay with us, not only will we have better data as it aligns to have they entered our kindergarten, but we know that they'll, they'll have better success with us long-term. So, as Leah said, kind of following those cohorts. But, great feedback, and we're going to get started. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Moving on, we have our Avid presentation. We have Dr. Randy Smazl and Alyssa Kaple. And two students here, thank you both for waiting through an hour, almost and a half of our board meeting. I appreciate it. I'll have Dr. Smazl introduce our students.
Good evening, Chair Allenberg. No, you're right there. You're good. Very good. Good evening, Chair Allenberg, Superintendent Stanley, school board members, community, and staff. We are super excited to present to you a little bit about our Avid programming. My name is Randy Smazl. I'm an Assistant Superintendent here in Edina Public Schools. We have Alyssa Kaple, who's our District Director for Avid Programming, also an instructional coach over at Valley View Middle School. Sitting next to Alyssa, we have Isa Amin. And Isa is a senior at Edina High School, and he is a DELL Scholar and a Wallen Scholar. And then to the right of Isa is Ben Hamsick, and Ben is the Avid Club President. So we're very excited that both of them could join us this evening. What we will take a few minutes to do is to share a little bit about the purpose of Avid, the why and the what, create some awareness of Avid, also share a little bit about our current implementation of Avid in Edina Public Schools. We want to make sure that you're aware of some of the impacts that Avid has on students, including some data and some student testimonials. In terms of how we fund Avid, Avid is paid for through achievement and integration funds. We have about $1.3 million that are given to us from the state of Minnesota in achievement and integration funds, and we spend those on reading and math intervention. We spend them supporting salaries for our cultural liaisons, for Avid programming, and for professional development inside the school district, among a few other things as well. The purpose of achievement and integration revenue is to really pursue economic, economic integration and racial integration. It's to pursue increased student achievement. It's also to increase equitable opportunities for learners and to decrease academic disparities based on racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic factors. So that's just a very brief background, but we are excited to turn this over to Alyssa, our main presenter.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Stanley, Chairman Allenberg, and the rest of the board. We really appreciate having Voice in this space to be able to share with you some good things and give you a little bit more background around what we are doing with Avid district-wide. And what I'm so excited about is this really did all start with our why. Back in 2008, we weren't just thinking about how to make students success, or help students be successful in school, K-12. We were looking at how are we helping our students not just be successful here, but beyond college? This is about getting them ready for life. This is about making sure we're just, we're not just producing kids who can get into college, but we have kids who can stay in college and then succeed afterwards. So we're going to go through some of those examples about how we're doing that. Again, we're going to put Student Voice in the room because that's so much more important than, but to give you an overview of what Avid is for our Edina schools. In 2008, we started with the middle schools, where we were just focused on the Avid elective. And that really was driven by what we call the backbone curriculum of WICER. And we use WICER like a word, because you know, we're in education, we use all of the acronyms all the time. But what WICER stands for is, it's about writing. And it's not just about can kids do a quick essay and be effective? It's also about writing to learn, writing to communicate. We're very explicit about strategies that help close those opportunity gaps for our learners. Then we also look at inquiry, which I know you've all have sat through countless presentations about how are we driving rigor, how are we increasing higher-level thinking, and all of those. Avid delivers that to us as solid best practices that all of our teachers can consistently use. But back when we were implementing it, that was the focus of the elective class, of this little group of kids that we got together to say, hey, you're Avid students, right? Now we see those things happening throughout the buildings, at all of the secondary buildings, and then also at one of our elementaries. Collaboration is a huge piece, right? We wouldn't all be here without skills and collaboration. Then organization, which I don't know how many of you have students at Valley View, where there are binders schoolwide, and I know as minimal as that may sound, has produced significant data around success for our students. The year that we implemented Binders Schoolwide, missing assignments went down by fifty-six percent. Okay, well, that's kind of a big deal for anybody who's lived with a middle schooler, right? So we knew that there were markers of success, that we encouraged to move forward with, then also looking at how do we incorporate these WICER strategies, R being reading, I didn't get to that one. But that, again, is teaching them the strategy about taking apart complex text and doing more beyond comprehension, and also being able to, I'm going to say, effective academic language and literacy. That idea that you're not just building vocab to memorize some words, you're building vocab to be an effective communicator and to be an effective student. If you want any more of the like specific details in the slideshow that's attached, there is the link to the National Avid site, as well with tons of resources and explanation. You can always reach out to me with any other specific programming questions, because I can gladly fill in those blanks. So district implementation, what does that look like? Dr. Smazl already alluded to the fact that it's funded primarily through our, our achievement and integration dollars. The board, there is, I'm going to say, minimal budget support at the sites as well. And what I mean by that is like supply budgets come out of the site budgets. So we've got administration who are committed to using these strategies across their schools, and they're showing that with money and staffing as well. We also have at our secondary buildings, so we started with the elective class at our middle schools and high schools. But now we are seeing also the components across all of our classes. So it's not just about the elective anymore. It is about how are we doing focus note-taking in every single science class? How are we doing critical reading strategies in all of our social studies classes? That is what Avid has morphed into in these last six years with much more gains for our students. All of our students have access to all of these strategies, not, again, not just an elective class. When we were, when we were at the middle school and we were doing some of our strategic planning, we were like, how are we helping our students transition from elementary into middle school? Which again, if any of you have survived a sixth grader, it's a hot mess, right? And once we get, when we get students in that position, there really is a lot of data that supports. What that experience is for them kind of drives their secondary experience. And we designed this class called Middle School Skills, which essentially every sixth grader that is in both of our middle schools basically gets an intro to Avid. So they get all those background strategies. They get organization, and how to use a planner, and how to take notes, and what to do with the notes. And all of those pieces are exposed to every student for sure, which is great, because, and it also becomes peer pressure, because now all of our students know how to run something called collaborative study groups, which means our teachers don't have to teach the kids how to do that, but they're ready to use it in their classes. So it's, it's also becoming this effective way that best practice trickles through everything that they do, which we love. And then at our elementary, we are so excited. We brought Countryside on board this year. You know, Karen Bergman and her staff are amazing with understanding what Avid Elementary looks like. And that is a little bit different than what it looks like at the secondary level. I'll go into that in a little bit more detail. And overall, we do know that there is a lot of crossover and, and infiltration of these strategies into our strategic plan as well. So they're showing up at the district level. A lot of our administrators don't run meetings without doing an Avid intro, you know, and, and demonstrating these strategies for their staff. So all of those pieces have just become normal. I did attach a district-wide implementation document there, if you would ever like to peek into that. But it talks to some of those high-gains things that happen because we do it district-wide. And I do need to give a nod to Dr. Stanley for what, from the minute she stepped in, Avid was a normal part of language in a lot of our TNL meetings, in a lot of our interactions when she was working with the community. It's not something that is ignored, and so I appreciate that very much. So let's take a look at our sites. So Countryside Elementary, knowing that we've got elementary, that is not an elective class. That is solely grade by grade. And so we rolled out to fourth and fifth grade this year. And the idea behind Avid Elementary is that all of our learners are exposed to these, I'm going to say, how-to-do-school strategies. And we are seeing some great things. So they agreed, the site team did. So all of our fourth and fifth grade teachers at Countryside started out this year with, we're going to focus on organization. They implemented these planners that are being phenomenal with kids. We've got kids writing their own essential questions. Meaning, at the end of the day, when they fill out their planner, they're not just like putting down, this is what I did today. They're writing an overall arching question about what did I learn today? But it's not just articulated in what did I learn today. It's how does da-da-da-da affect this? Like, they're using all of these much higher-order thinking skills as fourth and fifth graders. Planners are normal, building communication strategies between home and school, all of those fill in there. And then their binders are also organized. So they keep all their materials for school in one spot, which again, to us as adults, doesn't seem a big deal. But knowing all the results and, and research around executive functioning, it's a big deal, right? You can walk into any of the fifth grade classrooms and there are not random papers everywhere, all their little binders. It's like they own them, right? It's like their brand-new car, right? They're very proud of them, which is great. Obviously, a lot of our energy at Countryside has also been focusing on the site team. And that part of Avid is we have this body of teachers who kind of drive how things are going to go in the building and to make some decisions, and are intentional about staff development, and really help the building stay, I'm going to say, on track or on point for moving things forward, for, for getting to the next level. And they do all sorts of things. There's different, I'm going to say, coaching instruments, there's certification, there's data collection. The site team is all behind that. So it's a group of teachers who have all been trained and do that. And I just included some pictures. I know that you all had this ahead of time. But looking at student work and watching that develop and grow has been, I think, probably the biggest win for our teachers, because they're realizing that impact of consistent language, consistent practice, and that these are high-yield best practices. So Southview, we, they were actually the first to implement. And they obviously did a great job doing the elective. And I wanted to really speak just to the elective through the Southview lens. So what does the elective class look like? And so we do have a quick video to put some student voices in it. This is a video that we use when eighth graders are trying to explain to the sixth graders about whether they would like to apply to become an Avid student. So I don't know if somebody can hit play on that video. I don't think I have manipulation. There's the mouse. I see it. Perfect. Perfect. It's all right. We can pause it, exit out of it. That's in the slideshow if you'd like to take a peek. It's cute. We have no, that's all right. We have no sound. So the student, what's great about the, the way we run the Avid elective is it's really student initiative and energy that helps other students realize their own determination. So as we look at the Avid requirements, when we talk about an Avid elective student, we have one section at seventh, well, actually, one section seven through 12. So the elective class, for a student to become an elective student, they're going to apply, they're going to fill out, they're going to attend an interview, and then we do look at their data, whether it's test scores, grades, all of those pieces. What an Avid elective student looks like, the profile of an Avid elective student is in Edina, it's a middle-performing student. That is usually our target student. In Avid nationally, there is a focus on underrepresented populations, low income, special cases, you know, where students just need that extra support in school. But I want to be very, very, very clear. Avid is not a class that fixes broken scholars. That is not what Avid is. Avid is about our students becoming prepared and aware and effective as lifelong learners so that they can go out and also not just, again, be successful in school, but be successful beyond. So when we look at how our Avid electives roll out, am I back in the play mode? I don't have control.
Is it okay to ask a question at this moment? Or not?
Well, I don't have control of my slides. I won't be offended.
Thank you. I'm just, I'm very, I've been waiting for this slide in particular, the elective Avid, or the Avid elective student profile.
Yep.
So as you just defined it, what I'm curious as to, given the way that this works and the, and the key skills related to that, why is it not possible for it to be for everybody?
That is a great question. So when we talk about the Avid elective, that's a really concentrated effort
Okay.
around students who are performing in the middle. So really, when I look at a student who has a, already a 4.0 GPA, they have college culture language at home, they have resources at their ready, they're not going to get as much out of the Avid elective class because in the Avid elective class, when we start talking about how do you get ready for college or how do you do, it really is starting at the baseline level, not at the presumed level of what a lot of us have privilege at at home around, if that makes sense. So that's why we do have the elective class, but as far as like focus note-taking strategies, reading strategies, all of that.
Executive function elements.
That's all happening throughout the buildings
Okay.
in all of the classes.
Okay, thanks you for that clarification.
Yeah, not a problem. That's a great question. Thank you, for sure. I still don't have mouse control. I'm trying. There we go. I'm back. Thank you. I'll accept the video's going to try to play. Sorry.
Today's not our best night technologically.
I thought it was going to be nobody deal to
We'll just roll with it.
Do you want to do the next slide?
Yep, there we go. They're going to, can you hit me to the next slide and then I won't? Can I do it? There. All right, so there was what I just went over. So when we're selecting Avid students for the Avid elective class, they're in the interview process, but then we also have this matrix of giving them a score. So a student who is a first-generation college-goer is going to get a point versus somebody who's not a first-generation college-goer, because we know that the Avid strategies concentrated in the elective class are going to impact that student in a different way. We did, I was going to say, just to give you an example, out of our sixth-grade applicants coming into our 32 places, I interviewed 87 sixth graders at Valley View this year. So we interview everybody, whether, however they express interest, and when they apply, I sit down and I have a conversation with them, and then we figure out where our best fits are. And we've gotten pretty good at it as far as figuring out success rates and, and helping kids get in the right place and get what they need. We have, this is one of our success indicators, we have full Avid elective classes, 712 next year. We actually have an overfull one that I'll talk about when we get to the high school moment. So just in the, just, I've got some student quotes up there, but just the day in the life of an elective student, just to clarify that, because I know there were some questions around that. When we say we have an Avid elective student, it's just basically that's one of their elective classes. So it will replace one of their other electives. No longer will it replace art because of the new requirements. We're going to work on that. But it used to bump out one of the electives. So we're, we're pretty intentional around their scheduling, but otherwise, the rest of their schedule looks like their peers. So it's not any different in the rest of their day. There is a quick, I'm going to give a quick nod to the summer bridge. I know you've heard about our summer programming that we do with Hopkins that we invite all of our Avid seventh and eighth graders to. We are seeing math improvement scores with that. It is totally an enrichment preload experience for our students, and we are now collecting math data that shows that our students are making gains on their math scores. So we're like, yay, we're going to keep doing that, right? All right, so Valley View, when we talk about Avid school-wide, that's where I wanted to bridge that gap for all of you, is there is an, I'm going to say, an intentional approach by our educators to incorporate these core strategies. The main core strategy that all of our educators use is focus note-taking at the middle level. So in a very normal way, we can say, hey, everybody, we're going to use an essential question, we're going to take notes. Hey, I need you to revise your notes, or you're going to turn and talk to your partner and decide what to highlight. Your homework is to write a summary. All of this has been research-based best practice that we know improves students' retention of information, right? And I'm not saying that all the notes, I'm not condoning, go back to the stand-on stage on the stage moment and lecture, no. We are talking about if you get this interactive packet or you're reading an article, how do you turn that into notes? How do you use that information to then become, I'm going to say, more comfortable with the content? So we get out of that cram-and-scram role, right? Where students are like, oh, my gosh, I have a test tomorrow. I have to relearn the whole unit. We're shifting that culture. And we know we're shifting that culture because some of the data that we collected from our student surveys talked specifically to what our culture in the building is, all of our teachers, like, do you feel that your teachers believe you're going to go on and do something else after school? Well, for our seventh and eighth graders and sixth graders to report that, yeah, the majority of the staff really, truly believes that I'm going to do something else, I feel like that's a pretty big win for us. And then the other piece too that we do track at Valley View because we are binder-schoolwide is about how are the students doing with their binder? Are they engaging with it? Are the teachers engaging with it? And we also got high, high percentage feedback on that as well. The other component of an Avid elective is something called tutorials. And these are, these, it's, it's fashioned after a college study group. And I don't know how many of you have ever been in a college study group, but you know, you sit down that first time you do a college study group and you're like, I don't get it. Study group doesn't go too well, right? We have taught all of our students how to ask better questions and then guide each other's thinking with better questions. And then the learning and the understanding and all of that collaborative structure becomes a much higher-level rigorous outcome for our students than just saying, hey, I don't get it, can you help me with this? Even how they ask questions of their teachers, advocating for their needs, all of those pieces. Now, tutorials originated in the Avid elective. They happen throughout the building as collaborative study groups as well. So for example, our science teachers no longer have a review day, right? They instead have collaborative study groups where students pick what part they're still struggling with. They sit down with a cohort, and then they figure out those answers and get a better understanding together. So just some really good best practices starting to really show up. And again, it creates that sense of family. And then the last thing I'm going to leave you with for Valley View is around our staff feedback. I've got a ton of quotes, but I, this one really stood out with me from our new sixth-grade science teacher. She was in the building for exactly three days. We were doing Avid stuff for back-to-school workshop. She came up to me, she goes, I want to be on the site team. And I said, sounds good. I'll bring you along. Because we're always building the capacity for our staff, and she recognized that the minute that she was in the building. The examples that are on the screen with this one are all coming from all sorts of classes. It's called an Avid one-pager, and it has this high level, whether it's some type of art expression about the topic, they have to do an intentional border, they have to ask Level III questions, which are all personalized, but they have been used, there's examples up here from French class, social studies, our engineering classes, and our fax classes. So I just wanted to show the examples that this isn't just happening in the core classes, it's happening everywhere. And ultimately, I'm going to quote Ms. Leah Engelkess, "I love that Avid strategies are quite simply great teaching practice. All students benefit from the push to take ownership of their learning and to practice good student skills. Avid isn't content-specific, so it is easy to adapt and use within any content area." And that English class just got done doing these amazing comic strip one-pagers around the different reading lenses and had the students teach each other and just created this great learning outcome. And that brings us last but not least to the high school. At the high school, we have ebbed and flowed. We're kind of doing a little bit of a reboot with our school-wide efforts, just because we've had staff turnover, so we're trying to re-up some training and capacity building for our high school. Our Avid electives are thriving. There have been a couple of years in the past where we have not had Avid 11 and 12 just because of enrollment, and we're working through that. However, next year, and we are running Avid, all of them this year, next year, we have enough in Avid 12 that we're actually looking at splitting the class and running two sections of it, which is beneficial. And I'm going to let Isa talk to that a little bit more in just a minute, but that is our Avid brag, or our college brag board. That comes up every time the kids get an acceptance letter, the school goes on the board so that we can know what's going on. Overall, Avid is about building agency, opportunity, knowledge, and most of all, making sure that every one of our students in Edina has access to rigorous academics. And as long as we're moving that marker forward, I feel like it's a win. I would love if Benjamin would talk a little bit to how has the Avid elective helped you be the student that you are at the high school? And I'm going to pull the microphone down to you. There you go.
Thank you to the board, Dr. Stanley and Chair Allenberg, Ben Hamsik, the Avid Club president. But for me, Avid has been a great program because I'm a first generation to go to college, and as well, my parents aren't from America, so going to high school was hectic for me at the start, but I feel it's leveled out for me and I understand it better. The Avid program is amazing for all students, and I believe all students should take it because it's a great opportunity. This course, this course helps you get organized and get ready for college, things like good study habits and to be the best student that you can be. But also, Avid is a very diverse program, and you see lots of different people and different views. And as well, it's very welcoming and to us in Avid 11, it's like a family where we're all in it together and we have each other's backs, and if somebody has a problem, we help them. And as well, it's very safe, it's a safe area for all of us, and it's a welcoming place.
Awesome. I wanted you to be able to hear student voice in this because it's hard to explain and put into numbers what success looks like sometimes. I know I was on the phone two weekends ago with a student who graduated from our Avid program who now lives in Tennessee and was getting ready for finals and just needed some, like, recognition that he was traveling the right path, you know? Those connections stay forever. Our first Avid ninth graders that we had at Valley View all went to college and all graduated in four years, and I have a relationship with over 50% of them. So it is a, I'm going to say, it's an earned, shared respect, but at the same time, it's this safe space, and it's, it's just the mentality and culture of how we do school and to make it exciting and not scary as well. So let's talk student impact because that is what is important. We do know that our elective trend is now, we have gone from partially filled classes to, again, next year, they're all full, so much so that I think we have 40 right now enrolled for Avid 12, so we are looking to staff that and split it up because it's a pretty heavy lift for an Avid teacher to make sure that we've got that covered. Missing assignments are reduced, I had mentioned that before. Come on. Stuck. I promise it's supposed to fade in. Everybody wish it. There we go. Right now, our current data, so it's not even end of term, so this is in the flash and heat of the moment, we have 80% of our Avid elective students earning Cs or better, which, again, that's not 100%, we'll get there, I know we'll get there, but I thought, okay, let's just be real about where we are right now, post-COVID, can I say that? I don't even know if I can say that, in the stress of school as it is, that our students are still performing, which we appreciate. All of our Avid elective classes, or all of our Avid elective students must take an AP class. We know that there's direct correlation between success in college and whether or not they take an AP class. They take it and they take it successfully. 100% of our students, our Avid 12 students are accepted into college already. They just have to choose which one they want to go to, which is awesome, and attending their post-secondary options. Now, I do want to reinforce, Avid isn't just about the four-year college experience, it is about some post-secondary experience that they are set up to do. So we have had students attending Normandy, or attending any of those, like Normandale, any of those components as well, knowing that it's on their pathway. In fact, I just talked to Noah, who was frustrated because he's not going to be done at Mankato State because he had, because he did take a semester at Normandale, and I said, but wait a second, you're going to be ready, stop stressing out about it, you know? It's really just about talking them off the edge. It's just keeping them going. And then all of our Avid elective seniors have scholarship dollars awarded to them, which, when we look back at data even from 2018 and 19, we were still at 100%, even though, again, some of the students were going to a two-year opportunity versus that. And we've had students also join the military, come out for post-secondary options out of that as well. So basically, our main focus for all of our students is to make sure that they're future-ready, financially prepared, and removing the barriers to success. And that is why I brought Isa with, because not only, I brought Isa with for selfish reasons because he really is kind of our shining star, but I also wanted Isa to be able to be on the receiving end of some celebration for all of his accomplishments that he has done this year, but I'm going to let Isa tell his story a little bit.
Good evening, school board members. My name's Isa Min. I'm currently a senior at Edina High School, and I've been a part of Avid for one year. And so during my junior year, I knew personally that my organizational skills weren't the best, and I didn't know how the college journey would look like and what to do for next year, but I knew that Avid was a class that has college-ready resources, and so I signed up for Avid my senior year. And I'm glad I signed up for Avid because I have gotten to meet Ms. Henson, who has been one of the best teachers to come into my life, but also because Avid 12 has helped me immensely. Every week, Ms. Henson would lay out what was needed to be done from colleges, from researching colleges to setting up the Common App and working with us one-on-one in, in preparation for our college essays for the early action deadline. And Avid 12, Ms. Henson would also compile a list of scholarships and make sure every single one of us would complete it by the, by the deadline and going above and beyond for us. I remember I was missing an important part of my Dell Scholarship, and I thought I was, I already completed it, but it wasn't so. And so at 11:20 PM, I called her, and by a stroke, by a stroke, by a stroke of luck, she picked up her phone and she completed what I was missing for me, which was a recommendation letter. Because I thought I had two, but I had one. And so I made it by the deadline, which was 11:59 that night, and so I'm very grateful to her for that. And to me, unlike other classes, Avid 12 is like a family, like Ben said, and many of us come from similar situations, low-income, more people who are like in the middle class, but they know they can afford college. And it's things like this which has allowed us to form lifelong friendships through Avid 12, and I truly believe that more people should know about it because every child who struggles like me and needs support and resources deserves Avid.
Thanks, Isa. So to clarify Isa's accomplishments, he's been named a Dell Scholar, which there are only 500 named nationally every year. What that means is $20,000 in award along with computer support, books every year, correct? They have added to the Dell Scholarship also this year, out of, coming out of COVID, that there is a financial mental health support, meaning that if Isa needs to take yoga once a week, they will also cover the cost of that, whatever it takes or whatever support he needs. He was also named a Wallen Scholar, which is $4,000 a year, and also a winner of the COP family, a Foundation Scholarship Award too. And if you notice the list of colleges, are those all of them that you applied to?
There's a couple more.
Oh, there's a couple more. I asked him to send me an impromptu list of which ones he's been accepted to, he's been accepted to all of them, but you've made the decision to go. But you've made the decision to go.
To the, you have twin cities, yeah.
So thank you so much for your time and your patience and support in listening through all of this and what we do across our secondary and our elementary. Are there any questions?
Before I open up to the board, I just wanted to thank our students for coming in, presenting. Both of you should be very proud of yourselves for being part of the program. And I know you have a proud mom back there, so I just wanted to thank you for coming tonight and sharing your stories. I really appreciate you doing that. A question I actually had was, since you said the program is an application, how do students know to apply or why would a student apply?
I love that. So it starts with the sixth grade orientation. So during their middle school skills class, eighth grade Avid students will come in and talk to the sixth graders. It also goes out in all the registration materials. When students are, when they're getting ready to register at the middle level, there is also a, I'm gonna say, a survey about what are the types of electives you're interested in, just so we can start to get a feel for it. Avid is included in that list. So it's all normal part of the language. Once students register for the class, they'll get a link that's sent to them that says, hey, fill out this application. If they don't register for the class, but they said on the survey that they were interested in the class, I'll send them the application. Our teachers and our counselors all are fully aware of like, hey, I know that you were interested in it. So there's lots of entrance points for that. Are we coming on for the next one?
Can you guys mute? We can hear all of what you're doing. Thank you.
Perfect. So that's how they get ahold of that application. And there have been students that we have interviewed and then had them fill out the application afterwards, where they were like, yep, I'm interested, but their application didn't come in. So we don't keep that as a gate. It's very much just another piece of data, information about them.
Great. My only one piece of feedback or question was, some of the students that would be great for the program might also have a barrier to the application process, so.
Correct. And I agree with you completely. And that was, that's always been our intentional approach is to never make it the gate.
Yep. So thank you for mentioning that, and I appreciate that. So that was my question. I'll just open it up to the rest of the board. Director Shaw?
I've got a couple of questions. Thank you, guys. Thank you both for coming and being here. Congratulations, Isa. I guess my first question is about, so you mentioned, say, you had 80-some students that you interviewed for one school for the 30-some positions. Do you feel like of those 80 people or 80 students, actually, you're turning away students who maybe would benefit from the class? Is this something that we should be saying, this is actually an opportunity to expand capacity in order to expand the success?
Yeah, I love that you're asking that, Director Shaw, because yes, I do feel that we do need to evaluate whether we are reaching all of the students that we need to reach. And I know we're having the same, I'm gonna say not dilemma, challenge at the high school because our reality is, is we're sending two eighth grade, full eighth grade classes into the ninth grade one section of the elective as well. So sometimes students will filter in and out and will get those numbers. But as far as at the middle level, could I have filled two full sections with the students that applied? They would have been small sections. They wouldn't have been a full-capacity section. But is there room for making sure we're identifying the right student and getting the right ones to vote? Because that's the other part. This is all about students volunteering to do it. They need to be the ones stepping into it. As much as we want the parents to drive that, it really has to be their individual determination. But long answer short, Director Shaw, yes, I think we do have capacity to expand.
Okay. And then also in that same tone, what are the entrance ramps? So like Isa, you said you joined the class in 12th grade. So once you get to high school or even in middle school, where are those entrance ramps? Do they only exist if there's a space open or how does that work?
So every year, we will take new applicants for any of the classes. The students who are already in the Avid elective class, yes, do get priority if they're continuing on. There are some students that are in the Avid elective class that might not be a good fit. So we do exit some students as well. Sometimes even at semester time, if it's, we're not gonna set kids up to fail. So we make sure that's a good situation for them as well. But then even at the high school, there are the, as far as when they register, then we'll reach out to them. We'll make sure all the paperwork's in place. They've signed an Avid contract or whatever and look to make sure that they're a good fit. But again, yes, our students who are currently in Avid have priority seating for the next year.
Okay. And then, oh.
I just wanted to clarify something from a funding perspective for your first question. And correct me if I'm wrong, but unlike a lot of other programs where if you identify an issue such as a student that qualifies for special education, funding is attached to it, this program does not work that way, where we get a set amount of money from the state and then we basically add as many students as we possibly can with that money. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Do you want to answer?
If we wanted to add more students, it's not, it doesn't work the same as other programs from a financial perspective. I just wanted to.
But aren't the teach, are the teachers funded out of Avid? Or could they be funded out of an elective, right? Like if this means we have one less music class, is that an FTE then that goes to?
Right. It's kind of a combination. So we can, we do provide some support of Avid FTE to be able to fund some of those lower enrollment sections. But yes, one of those electives could be part of the staffing formula. Achievement integration is a three-year plan and a three-year budget. And this year, we're gonna be up to review it and then create the next three-year plan. So that'll be part of our, I'm sorry, next year. That'll be part of our conversation next year is to really look at what are the priorities that we want to put into the achievement integration plan for the next three years.
Okay. And then my final question, you mentioned it briefly, is, you know, there's all of these building-wide strategies that I hear being talked about a lot in the middle school. And you mentioned briefly about some professional development at the high school level. This board is really sick of me saying this, but I want to make sure we are really, when we push this stuff up, that we have the capacity at the high school for our students to follow through on these skills that they've created. And that are we, do we have a way that we're actually measuring that that's happening and that our kids aren't reaching high school and being like, wait, what? This is different.
Yeah, no, we are actually, so part of ninth grade and 10th grade advisory is going to have integrated Avid lessons incorporated in it. So then it's serving two purposes. It's helping the students continue on with the strategies that they're bringing forward, and it's reminding the staff of what these high-yield strategies look like and sound like and breathe like with our students. So there's that piece that's happening right now. Like it's, that's becoming an instant action moment.
So right now, or you're saying the curriculum will happen next year?
That will happen next year. So we've got that all in the planning and that's in play. Then as far as building capacity with the staff themselves, every year, that is part of our A&amp;I monies is we fund five staff to attend the trainings in the summer, which are pretty intense. And that helps then bring back to your job alikes and your departments to build. So at one point, the high school was at like a 46% of their staff had been trained. And I think that was, I want to say five, six years ago. With all the turnover, we have not been keeping pace with replacing that. And so I think we're only at like the low 30s right now for as far as content teachers being trained in Avid strategies. And so that's where we're working. Now, the other thing that we do have at our advantage is the head of PD at the high school is our second-most-trained Avid person in the district. And she is phenomenal about, hey, we're doing ACT, vocab building strategies. Well, guess what they all are? They're all Avid strategies. So we integrate a lot of those experiences for the staff. It's just as far as calling them officially trained, we're reworking that. So it's happening, and we can tell that it's happening in places with Wicker walkthroughs. And I go in and observe teachers and see how those things look, but not a problem.
Director Green?
Thank you so much for this presentation. It was fantastic. Essa and Ben, you guys really do represent like just outstanding work. So it was really exciting to hear about your experience, so thanks for coming tonight. I just, I don't really have a question. I have more of a comment. But I just am thrilled with the growth of Avid and what has transpired over the last couple of years. I had met with Alyssa actually before I ran as a board member and was the first time I actually really heard about Avid. And seeing it play out this way is just so exciting, the touchpoints for all of our students and the growth there. So just really, really well done. So that's all I got for you.
Thank you, Director Green. Appreciate it.
I just have one really quick question, if you don't mind. So if you had to articulate the one thing that you need or change to make it even more successful or broadened or more impactful to more of the students that you have access to, any comment that you'd wish for us to know?
Is this where I get to dream a little bit and say it out loud? Dr. Spas is like, great, she has the microphone. No, the one thing, no, in all honesty, the one thing that I have come to very much value this year is the way it's working as a system. It's not just about Avid being a program. It is about, it's normal to you. It's normal to Dr. Stanley. It's normal to our staff. It's not something that's seen as remedial or those pieces. So I'm really, I guess, the one thing is for us to continue growing our transitional mindset around, or transformational mindset around how does this really truly help every student in Edina? So what that looks like feet on the ground is to make sure that we continue to support that system. Like do we have a director, a district director in place who can help manage the background stuff that's happening? Do we have super excited, impactful Avid elective teachers sitting in those places? Do we have building leaders who are also building capacity? I love it. Who are helping drive that? So I think that's my biggest thing, Director Berman, is that I need it to continue as a system.
Anything else? Karen, did you have anything?
No, I was just gonna say thank you, like the other board members have said. And Alyssa, I have had the pleasure of seeing my two middle schoolers do one of these things. And I will also tell you, as someone who teaches at a community college, the students that I have that have had Avid are head and shoulders above a lot of my other students, just in terms of being prepared for the college-level work. So Avid, I've seen on both ends of when they're getting into middle school and then what that looks like in higher ed too. So thank you for the good work that you're doing, that you're doing.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you guys so much.
Thanks.
And keep up the good work. Thank you.
Yay.
Next in discussion is Policy 614. Director Green?
Thank you. So tonight, we have one policy that is up for discussion. Policy 614, our assessment plan. We will bring up Director D. St. Hubert. If anyone has any specific questions. Really, the changes on this policy were more for consistency and update to statute. And really, the bulk of the changes were really expanding the definition of the assessment plan to match up with accuracy of how things are being played out in the district. So does anyone have any questions? Anyone have any questions? No. Director Gabler, do you have any questions from beyond? Nope. Okay. Jody, thank you.
You might as well stay up there.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's great. So we will bring this for action at next month. The other thing I just also wanted to say too with this policy is that, or not just with this policy, but just a reminder that there are a lot of other policies that are in committee right now, including ones that have been highlighted from the board and ones that are in regular review. So we have a slew that are coming through here in June and July. So that's it. Just an update.
Thank you. We're moving on to our action items. Do I have a motion to approve the visual arts curriculum review update?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Director D. St. Hubert?
This on, there we go. Thank you. Thank you, board members, Chair Allenberg, Dr. Stanley. We have the visual arts curriculum review in front of you again today. It was, we had an amazing group of teachers on April 18th present the highlights of the presentation, and we have not had, made any changes to it. So if there are no questions or feedback, then ready for approval?
Do board members have feedback or questions? Okay, we need to vote by roll call. Ann?
Allenberg?
Aye.
Aram?
Aye.
Birdman?
Aye.
Gabler?
Karen, can you hear me?
Aye.
Okay.
No, again, aye.
Green?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Wallen Friedman?
Aye.
The visual arts curriculum review has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the vacant board seat process resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we, as you might have heard at the beginning of the night, we, Vice Chair Wallen Friedman is moving out of the state. And so we have a, will have a vacant board seat at the beginning, starting June 1st. And this is a resolution to codify the process that the board is recommending for filling that vacancy. For those that did not hear the work session earlier, I want to make sure that the public understands that because of the timing of the vacancy, that there will be two different processes going on. There will be a special election occurring in November that we will, all of this is by state law. This is mandatory. The special election is mandatory. It's also mandatory that as a board, that we fill the vacancy between now and when the special election is. Both of those are determined and dictated by state law. So we will be doing both of those. What is up to the board to decide is how we fill that vacant board seat for the interim period before the special election. And that is what this process is about. So that's what this resolution defines as that process. What the board has, we talked about tonight and what is listed in this resolution is for the board to directly appoint somebody and vote somebody in. We reviewed a lot of different recommendations that other boards have done. We spoke to the MSBA, District Legal Council. And because of the timing involved and different processes and the short amount of time that this appointee will actually be in place, this process made the most sense to us as a board. With that explanation, Julie, did you have anything to add from a governance perspective?
I think one, the only other thing I will add is we felt that this process and this, when we talked about as a board in the work session too, that this process really allowed us to have the most transparency and clear communication on the double processes and both pathways going at the same time. So.
Are there questions or comments from other board members about the process itself?
I just had a couple of questions.
Yes.
In general, with the, if someone's interested in it and they're going through the process, how do they, and they meet the criteria, how do they go about submitting their interest to Governance Committee or the board in general?
So we will probably clarify all of that at our next meeting. I don't have that answer tonight, to be honest. So.
And then another question, just real quick too, is related, I read something about the 30-day window and the feedback, or the 30-day window. Do we know what that, what's the purpose of that waiting period? Or is there a, is there anything that occurs during that period?
So I'm not 100% clear on the purpose. What Director Aram is referring to is once a interim appointee is voted in by the board, the state requires a 30-day waiting period before the appointee can, once they've been approved and then when they can actually take their oath of office and sit on the board. My guess is, and I probably shouldn't guess about anything, but my guess is it's so that process can take place that the members of the district can actually appeal who is appointed. And so my guess is it's to allow that timeframe, an adequate timeframe for that appeal process to take place. And so that's why there's that 30-day time period that's dictated by law. So.
Thanks.
Karen, has her hand? Yes, Karen? Oh, sorry. And then Dan also alluded to a question that I didn't have the answer for tonight. From a timing perspective, we are voting on an overarching process tonight. Then we would have a next, a follow-up meeting on the 17th where we discuss finer details of the process as far as, now that we've defined an overarching process. now that we've defined an overarching process, how exactly will this work? And that would be the intent of our next meeting. Director Shaw?
I just had a clarification question. So by approving this, are we locking ourselves into kind of the category of the appointee being a former board member? Or is there anything that needs to be changed in order, so say, no former board member is interested? No former board member, kind of who is interested, fits qualifications, whatever it is? What are we, by approving this tonight, locking ourselves into kind of moving forward if it doesn't work out?
So the resolution itself, we have discretion to do whatever we want. The resolution itself is a statement that says, this is the process we would like to undertake. If we get to our next meeting and we decide this is our first approach, but this is not working and we want to do something else, this does not preclude us from doing anything else. It's, I would say it's a formal statement that says, this is the approach we want to take, but it's not legally binding in any way.
Okay.
Anyway, it's nothing beyond that.
Yep, that makes sense. Yep, that makes sense. That makes sense, thank you.
Anything else? Anne, can you do the roll call vote for this one?
Allenberg?
Aye.
Arum?
Aye.
Birdman?
Aye.
Gabler?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Wallen Friedman?
Aye.
The vacant board seat process resolution is approved. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution acknowledging the vacant board seat?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And just for clarification purposes, this is basically simply a resolution acknowledging the vacant board seat, what the title suggests. It puts the date on there when Lenny is leaving the district because what we have to do from a state statute, a legal perspective, is very dependent upon the date that Lenny is leaving the district. So this specifically states the date that he's leaving the district, which is really the intent of this document. Any questions on this document?
Allenberg?
Aye.
Arum?
Aye.
Birdman?
Aye.
Gabler?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Wallen Friedman?
Aye.
The resolution acknowledging the vacant board seat is approved. Do I have a motion to approve the eighth grade French immersion trip to Quebec?
Aye, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It was Michael and Dan. The board had a discussion earlier tonight about international trips. And so for individuals that did not watch the work session, I just wanted to let the community know that we did have a fairly lengthy discussion about international trips in general and the new reality that we live in post-COVID or still with COVID, whatever anyone wants to define our new era as. And that these would be our first international trips in this era. And we thought it was a worthwhile discussion to have, does, what does this mean? Are there new parameters we need to have? Are we concerned about having these international trips? So we had a discussion about this. And we want to reiterate to the public that, a couple of things. One is that as a district, we utilize the State Department's travel advisory system as guidance for allowing students to travel. This guidance system has COVID rates built into these advisories, and it's a four, it's ratings one, two, three, or four. If it is at a level three or four, which is a warning about travel, then all of these are taken into consideration. So I wanted to let the community know that. And then we now require travel insurance for all trips to prevent monetary losses for families. So these were some of the things that we were talking about out of our concern about the instability of travel now. And so I just wanted to make sure that the community knew that we were discussing these things because we always have the safety of our students forefront. But we also want to make sure that they can experience a lot of these wonderful opportunities. Did you want to add anything to that?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. With that being said, does anyone have any comments about this trip specifically, which is the Quebec trip?
So I've got comments about the three trips in their entirety. Not so much the Quebec trip, which is listed as a cost of about $2,000, but then the next trip is at $3,400, and the one after that is $4,900. And so I have struggled for years with the increasing costs of these trips and the viability of some of our students ever being able to afford them. So, and I know there's fundraising opportunities. Personally, I think that the board should take a look at the school district creating a fund to actually pay for the cost of students. So we take, for example, if 10% of our population is free and reduced, then we should be able to have a district fund that would allow 10% of the slots to be funded by the district. So for example, I think in the Madagascar trip, there's approximately 30 students. The district should look at paying the cost for three of those students, if there are three that are interested. And having said that, I would probably say that there should be some nominal amount that students should raise to go. But if it's a $4,900 trip, maybe the student has to raise $500. But to sit here and say that these are opportunities for all of our kids, I think is not realistic. I don't think that someone who is free and reduced can afford $4,900. And I think that if they could raise $4,900, this may not be the best resort, best way to spend that money. So the district, if we really want these opportunities, we should fund it. We've talked about this in the past. We don't want to not have these opportunities for our students. But I think that if we truly believe that these are opportunities, we should make sure there are opportunities for everybody.
Can I, I'll add something on to that because we talked about it in teaching and learning too. And I had thought we would see it, but it might have been misunderstood. But we had talked about really putting together a timeline. You know, in our policy, we talk about kind of having, I think it's like local, national, international, right? Like a rotation of opportunities that would allow for the same educational experience or the same desired outcome. And I think as we progress out of COVID or into the new normal of COVID, kind of evaluating that timeline in a holistic approach is something that we probably need to do. These three are the, you know, we're at the 12-month mark on these and we need to look at them. But moving forward, I know we had discussed that in the past about kind of seeing things on a holistic approach. Opportunities that, that if we can see, when we are looking at an international trip, we also have in front of us, what were the local and domestic trips that kind of complement this?
Right, because our policy currently says that we should have local trips that have similar objectives. But I will say that while that's an improvement, it's not the same.
Correct.
I mean, I think that it is a potential, you know, life-changing for a student to go to Madagascar. And to be able to go to Lake Erie and do the same research is not quite the same. I'll also note, it's not just a free and reduced issue. We have families that are just above that crate, above that level, that also would have a hard time meeting this. And so while it might require use of our funds, and maybe it requires a couple less trips, I do think we owe this to our students to figure out a way to actually make it available to them.
Thank you, Lenny. Any other comments? Great, thank you. We'll now vote on the French immersion trip to Quebec.
Allenberg?
Aye.
Arum?
Aye.
Birdman?
Aye.
Gabler?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Wallen Friedman?
Aye.
The trip to Quebec is approved. Do I have a motion to approve the Edina High School band trip to Eastern Caribbean?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there comments, questions about this specific trip?
Allenberg?
Aye.
Arum?
Aye.
Birdman?
Aye.
Gabler?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Wallen Friedman?
Aye.
The band trip to the Caribbean is approved. Do I have a motion to approve the Edina High School biology trip to Madagascar?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I do have a couple of questions. Definitely concerned with Lenny had to say. Yes, Madagascar is an incredibly interesting and probably dynamic opportunity, but the cost is troubling. I'm always curious in this type of request, what was else considered? What is specific or unique to why Madagascar at $4,900 per student versus other options that are then there? I know that's not involved in this application, but I'm just wondering in our process or at the school's process, why was this specifically picked? And why should we then look at that, given the funding issues that might arise for certain students?
I was gonna have Jody come over.
Thank you.
I think I know the answer, but I don't think I know it well enough to.
Well, you might know more than I. I do know that the school does take a complete process, right? And that the teachers submit this to administration, and they work on it with administration. And then, then it comes here to the board. So I don't know in specifics for the Madagascar trip, why that was chosen. And with Jen not being here with us today, I can follow up with those specifics. And since I'm here, I do want to comment on the scholarship. I do appreciate that conversation and did want to add in conversation with Principal Carter that they, Lenny, as you noted, they do try to support students in raising the dollars and giving scholarships. She did note that there's a lot of opportunity, not a lot of opportunity, but that often some trips are fully funded from outside agencies as well. So continuing to look into that, and the cost is important. Chair Ellenberg, I don't know if you have anything to add with, to the why with?
I don't know exactly which program these are part of, but these are set destinations that are set by a larger science organization. And it's a, and I wish I knew off the top of my head, but it is, but it's a nationally recognized science organization. And they partner with organizations within these locations for the science and research. So I don't believe our district even chooses these locations. They are actually set and then were part of this.
Excellent. Thank you for that background. That is very helpful.
Does the Operation Walakia ring a bell? Okay.
So that's, that's how they get determined.
Great, thank you very much.
Sorry, now I'm behind because I was trying to think through that. We'll now vote to approve the biology trip to Madagascar.
Allenberg?
Aye.
Arum?
Aye.
Birdman?
Aye.
Gabler?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Wallen Friedman?
Aye.
The biology trip is approved? Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve Policies 509 and 911?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Director Green?
So we have two policies up for action tonight. Policy 509, resident enrollment and assignment. And Policy 911, use of volunteers in schools. There were no changes from our last meeting, so does anyone have any additional questions? Okay, fantastic. I think we're ready to vote. Chair Ellenberg?
We will now vote on Policies 509 and 911.
Allenberg?
Aye.
Arum?
Aye.
Birdman?
Aye.
Gabler?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Shaw?
Aye.
Wallen Friedman?
Aye.
Policies 509 and 911 are approved. Are there any committee updates from other board members?
I have a committee update.
Outstanding.
Yes. Board member Arum and I from the LAC have a quick update that we wanted to give. One, just to let the community and other board members and our administration know, advocacy efforts during this session continue to press on and with a focus primarily on trying to eliminate the special education cross-subsidy. A couple key things to note. One, I want to give a big thank you to Director Jeff Jorgensen, who was interviewed for the Sun Current in an article that just ran regarding this and regarding the board resolution that we passed. But Director Jorgensen, you did a fantastic job explaining the cross-subsidy. And that was talked about at the Capitol today, that article with me from a couple different people, and how great your comments were in explaining it. So that was great. In addition, board members with the LAC were down at the Capitol today, took part in participating of support in a press conference with a multitude of education leadership partners that we work with, with the LAC and the district across the board. And it was, it had a great showing with a lot of press. So that was fantastic. And a special shout out to our local representatives, which we met with also Senator Melissa Franzen and Representative Heather Edelson, who were fantastic hosts and really spent some time talking with us. So with all that said, I also wanted to say that the LAC is taking applications for the 2022-23 school year. Anyone interested, students, eighth graders going into ninth grade. And then our freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, if you're listening, please apply. And then community members and parents, all who live in Edina or have students that are enrolled in the district, are also encouraged to apply. Those, that application process is open until May 18th. So go to the Edina website and you can find the information. And I did bring one visual. This was from the Capitol today. Our kids matter. So it was great. So we're keeping on. And that is it, unless anyone has any questions for me on that. Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any superintendent updates?
No, I don't have any this evening.
Outstanding. Okay, if there's nothing else, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.